Testing. Testing, testing, testing.
Test, test, test. Test.
Yeah. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good. So we have Councilman Kimball, Councilwoman Hare, Secretary Gardapee, Councilman Butler. I assume you all will remain online.
That's correct.
That is what President Nuttall said. Oh my God. Either way, I'm here.
Well, I'm, I'm here, I'm at home. It's like I can go out there so she doesn't have to be by herself.
No, I got, I got Dr. Evans next. Ready to get started this evening. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And with that, Councilwoman Hare, would you mind giving us the invocation at this time? Oh, Councilwoman Hare dropped off. With that, then we'll ask Secretary Gardapee, would you mind giving us the invocation? It is five thirty-six and we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Sure. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, just to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We pray for all those members out there who are under the weather, Lord. There's been a lot in our community. I just pray for their healing, pray for Treasure Chapman. She's not feeling well tonight either, Lord. I pray you lift her up and heal her as well. Lord, I just pray that everything goes well tonight and that we remain servants to your guidance, Lord. And I just pray that, that all these things in your Son Jesus is fresh in the next, amen.
Thank you very much, Secretary Gardapee. With that, we'll go ahead and go to item two, roll call.
Miss DiNardo.
She's excused.
Jordan Canojo.
Here.
George Gardapee here, Carol Chapman.
Excused.
Cynthia Butler.
Here.
Donna Hare.
Donna, here.
Jean Evans.
Here.
Sammy Kimball.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. We have a quorum. Moving on to item three, approval of agenda. Council, you have the agenda before you. If there's no additions or revisions, ask for motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion. I don't have any changes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Secretary Gardapee, seconded by Councilwoman Butler. Call for the vote, please.
Jordan Canojo? Oh, sorry. George Gardapee, yes? Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
I hope.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number four, approval of minutes. Item under that is approval of Pawnee Business Council special meeting minutes for January twenty-first, 2025. On line fourteen, I noticed that it had President Nuttall on there for calling the meeting to order. She was excused from the meeting, so we'll change that to Vice President Canojo. Other than that, is there any other revisions or changes to the minutes?
Yeah, I missed that one, Vice President. I only had one other change. It was on line forty-five. It was a disappointment instead of, it was disappointing to see so few travel leaders present.
All right. Council, any other revisions to the minutes? And if not, do I have a motion to approve minutes with changes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Secretary Gardapee to approve minutes for meeting minutes for January twenty-first, 2025. What changes? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second about?
This is the one.
Councilwoman Butler? Call for the vote, please.
George Gardapee, yes. Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
I hope.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Moving on to item five, Pawnee Business Council travel report and requests. Council, is there any travel reports or requests? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number six, Pawnee Business Council committee reports. Council, any committee reports at this time?
Thank you, I have one. I met with our, our Dadaha, our, our Buffalo Committee yesterday. And we had a very good meeting. We are moving ahead. We have some fencing that's coming up. We discussed a, a new grant that's, that's available and, and provided some feedback amongst us. And we're just moving forward with the thought of, you know, having a small herd here, you know, within this next, maybe by year end. The location of that is on the northeast side of the reserve. Jimmy Justice has some strategic plans to, when they do bring them in as far as getting them acquainted with our trains that are coming in and, and that could highly affect them and make them nervous and upset them. It, it was a very good discussion and we're going to meet again next month and just continue our process. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, I might add, I might add that I do have an IT communications meeting tomorrow morning as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Kimball. Council, Councilwoman Butler, see your hands up.
Yes, I just, we had a tourism meeting last week and we just went over some things. We're finalizing the sign for the museum. It's installation where we'll make some adjustments, make some, some, some movement of the lettering. And I know that property had gone through and put some new lighting up for the sign. So it's just getting more exciting because we've never had a sign and we've been there for years. So it's just exciting to be able to see this, to show everybody that, hey, Pawnee Nation Museum is right here and please come and visit. So it's just exciting to see the excitement with the staff as well and hopefully the new board, once they get, we get a board that they'll be happy about with what we're, what's going on and what's happening with the museum. The other report is governing documents. We had a convention meeting on Sunday. Our next meeting on, will be on March second. And we are almost ready to send this document to the people. And we did get some, had some conversation with Ms. Sherry Lovin. She is, works with the BIA at, is an area office or down in, is it Anadarko? I can't remember where they're located, Oklahoma City or Anadarko. Anadarko, thank you, Donna. And then she was, she wants to have a meeting with, with us to go over what processes they go through for a secretarial election. So. election, so, um, she wants to get a, a meeting with, um, one, namely the council, so we can ask any questions that we have as, as council members, but also as delegates, and she would like the delegates to be there as well, so that they can hear the process of what's, what's next for all the work that they've been doing, you know, we've been working on this document for two and a half, two and a half years, almost three years, and, um, I think that the, 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 the revisions that are being made, uh, to strengthen this document, um, a lot of time and effort have gone into it, and, um, I, 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 I hope that our Pawnee people will be proud of the things that, um, where we're trying to, to strengthen, um, especially in this, these, right now, with this administration, I think some of this is really needed, but also to incorporate some of our own language, uh, within the document, I think that that sets us apart from a lot of, you know, other constitutions, you know, it's, it's already been said, but to use our, our new, uh, revised language, um, just the, the, the way we spell our language and stuff, I think that that's important, that we utilize that, but just wanted to give that little update, I'll be sending out an email probably either this evening or tomorrow, to try to get a meeting, she's, she would like to meet this week, but I think it's too early for this week, um, it'll be a virtual meeting, she's coming in person, um, but it'll be a, a hybrid, because a lot of our, our members that are on the committee are not from Paw, are in Pawnee during the week, so, just wanted to give that much, uh, that, that update on what's going on with convention, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Butler, a lot of work has been, um, done during the convention, so it's good to hear that that's coming down to the wire, so appreciate that. Uh, Councilwoman Hare, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, so I chair the Native American Affairs Committee, and we are scheduled to normally meet next week, but National Congress of American Indians is going on, and most of our members will be there, so we're gonna be scheduled for that meeting, we're still developing the agenda, uh, Pawnee Nation is not a member of National Congress of American Indians, and so we made the decision to go with the United Indians, uh, Oklahoma is, uh, because of our legislative funds, so, um, also, I chair the Landry and Prop Affairs Committee, and we have, we'll have our, uh, meeting scheduled for the Thursday, Thursday, Tuesday, and Thursday, um, Saturday night, and, uh, I'll be in that again, that's all.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hare, for your, uh, reports as well. Moving on, um, there's no other council reports, moving on, item number, let's see where we're at, item number seven, new business, we have one item under new business, which is approval of Resolution twenty-five-ten, Behavioral Health Native American Bank Operations Term Sheet, uh, we have Mr. Brian Kirk, who's with us this evening, um, council, I know we've met on this, um, in a work group session, and so, um, I know the terms have been sent to you all, and the comparison has been sent to you all as well, and so what I would like to do is, uh, just open the floor to Brian, to just give a brief, um, give a brief presentation on it, and then we'll open the floor to the council for any questions, so Brian, floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice President, um, like you mentioned, we kind of, uh, been talking about this, uh, but just to kind of give a brief overview, what this is, is just another one of those milestones that we're meeting, what this is, is looking at modifying the existing term sheet that we have currently, and what we're doing is, um, utilizing some of the, um, construction funding that we have, and modifying it for operational costs, as we're getting closer to completion, we're able to utilize this fund to kind of help us go through the process of working with the state of Oklahoma, and covering the cost during that, uh, time will be o- occupying, um, the facility through a temporary license, and working with the state to get a permanent license, so this funding will help with the, um, operational costs during those, those periods of getting our permanent license for the behavioral health clinic.
Thank you very much, Brian, council, with that, I'll open the floor for any questions. Councilwoman, um, Kimball, I see your hand is up, I'll recognize you at this time.
I think, yeah, I thank you, did we get a comparison, did, 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 did we get an, uh, analysis of that breakdown, a comparison breakdown?
We did, uh, that was sent last week, um, try to remember what date that was sent on, I believe it was the day after we had the word, so it was last Wednesday, I believe is when it was sent.
Okay, good, I did, okay, okay, thank you. Last Wednesday. Okay. I'll put my hand down, if I can, um, let me figure it out.
Okay. Councilwoman Kimball, it was sent on the twenty-ninth at twelve twenty-six PM, so if you're looking for it. Council, uh, any other questions? And just to also, just, um, just let others know as well, currently we have a term sheet with the Native American Bank, uh, this cur, this current term sheet is to help cover the construction cost, it's a, uh, it's basically a, um, um, a term that will allow us to draw any funds needed during construction, um, we have U, a USDA, an EDA funding that will, um, help, uh, cover that as well, that's the collateral for that, so this new term, or this modified term that we have, um, currently right now, is, uh, that's on the agenda, and what we're looking to approve is to cover, as Brian said, the operational costs as we s, uh, do the startup for the behavioral health, um, currently right now, the state of Oklahoma is going to be certifying the behavioral health, but during that certification process, um, we won't be allowed to, um, collect any insurances as, um, as we have a temporary license, and so, this will help cover a lot of the startup costs, and, um, that we have, as we're going through that approval process from the state, and so that's what this is gonna do. Now, we have submitted, um, a grant, and I know we're looking at other funding to, um, help cover startup costs, so that we will not have to, um, so we will not have to draw off of this as much as, uh, as anticipated, that's the plan for that. And at this time, it is five fifty, and I will recognize that President Nettle has joined the meeting, President Nettle? It is yours. And we are on, uh, new business, new business, uh, approval of Resolution twenty-five-ten, Brian already, um, presented on it, the floor is open to council for any questions, is where we're at currently.
Are there any questions by council? Anyone online? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove Resolution twenty-five-ten?
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second.
I second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, second by Dr. Evans.
Um, President, I do, I do want to also mention, uh, there is some, um, wording on the, on the resolution that I would just like to revise, it's not going to affect the, what would you call that, the, the purpose of the resolution, um, and I can get with Brian on, on that, unless you want me to read everything that I have.
If, if you just want to read the change, and then that, that way it can be noted.
Okay. So, on the, one, two, three, four, one, on the fifth, whereas, where it says, and, whereas after reviewing and evaluating the financing options, the interim officers found the most prudent financing option for the operations of the mental health facility was with a proposal by the Native American Bank, um, I would like to reword that, where it says, and whereas, after review, after reviewing the modified terms, the, um, incorporators found, uh, or, the incorporators recommend the modified terms proposed by Native American Bank to finance the initial operations of the mental health facility. And then this last, whereas, whereas the Pawnee Business Council approved the term sheet and financing documents with Native American Bank, where, I would just change it to whereas the Pawnee Business Council approve. And then under the, now therefore be it resolved, the Pawnee Business Council does hereby approve, instead of approves, the Pawnee Nation Mental Health of LLC financing plan as reflected in the term sheet with Native American Bank, to start the financing for the operations of the mental health facility, be it further resolved, the Pawnee Business Council, and then set, and there's an and, I would take that and out, Pawnee Business Council authorizes the president of the Pawnee Business Council to execute such documents necessary for construct, uh, for, uh, instead of construction financing necessary for operational financing, or initial operating.
Do we, do we know if the president's signature is the only one required? Is the treasurer's not required? Okay, signature.
And as I mentioned, I, I can get with Brian on those too, if they want to catch all that.
Okay, Councilwoman Butler, would you like to amend your, um, a, approval with changes?
Yes, with changes.
Dr. Evans, are you agreeable?
Yes, Madam President.
All right. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes, Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Um, yeah, thank you, um, Vice President Canuho, I do not see that comparison sheet, I've looked at the attachments, uh, it was only sent to, uh, the, the, uh, President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary, from Chris Walters, it was not sent to this council, and that's what I asked to look at, so could you just pull it up, please, so I can look at it, I'm sorry, but I don't want to vote on something that I can't even see, and I don't know how, if everybody else got it, but I, it's not in my email.
Are, are you on your computer right now, they can direct, mail it to you right now?
Yeah, well, you can mail it to me right now. But I don't, did, did everybody else see the comparison sheet, or was that not important? I don't know, look, I, I'd like to look at it, though.
Okay, she, uh, Brian just resent that to you, Councilwoman Kimball.
That'll be a yes on me, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Kimball.
Thank you.
Secretary Gardapi, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. This time we're at item number eight, open forum, is there anything for open forum? Nothing online, anything from council, any announcements? Upcoming, um... Oh, I thought we were gonna address one, I don't know if you guys remember the USDA meeting that was supposed to be scheduled for tomorrow, it has been postponed, I don't know if anyone had registered for that, so just, uh, putting that information out there, um, I imagine that's gonna, that's how it's gonna be with a couple of other meetings that are coming up, um, next week, I believe there's, uh, IHS budget formulation is still ongoing, um, Direct Service Tribes Advisory Committee meeting, and NCAI as well, uh, we are not a member of NCAI, but they will be providing critical updates as to what's happening, um, at the Capitol, nation's Capitol, so, we do have a couple of contacts that are, um, gonna be sharing the information with us as, as that meeting proceeds. Yes, Jamie?
Um, so we have some events that are gonna be going on before your guys' next council meeting, um, on Saturday, February eighth is the, the Sahu Council's quarterly meeting, and that will be at nine AM at the new enrollment building located at seven hundred Agency Road, there will be a, um, the Princess Committee is taking applications for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Princess, the deadline to apply for that will be February fourteenth, um, anybody interested can talk to Ms. Tiffany Fritz-Nichols, or they can email PNPrincess@PawneeNation.org. On Sunday, February sixteenth, the Pawnee veterans are hosting a youth powwow, it will begin at one PM at the Wellness Center Gym, there'll be gore dancing, tiny tots, juniors, supper break, and then teen categories, um, and then the Pawnee Nation will also be closed on Monday, February seventeenth, um, for Chiefs Day, um, but the city of Pawnee is also doing their State of the City at six PM at the Pawnee Bill Event Center.
All right, thank you for that. Hearing no further announcements, that takes us to item number nine, set the next meeting date.
That should be on the eighteenth, yes.
That has us at the third Tuesday, February the eighteenth at five thirty PM. And item number ten, adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Vice President, second by Secretary Gardapi. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes, Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council, um, we are adjourned at six PM.
Thank you.
And council, if you would stay on, we're, uh, gonna discuss...